Call the meeting to order. Rise for the pledge. All right, welcome everybody to the August 10th Board Meeting. We will, let's see. Do we have, we met in executive session for 10 minutes. We didn't meet after the meeting last time, did we? To discuss personnel matters. We'll begin tonight with citizens' comments to the board on agenda items. Do we have any of those this week? Online or other than?
We do not have any comments online, nope.
Very well. We'll move right to the status of summer projects.
This is Mr. Gallegos, who is going to take us on a virtual tour of a number of projects. And we invite you to take a look at what Delbert's got to share with us.
Yes, come along on the tour with me. So, over the summer, we did a total, or we will have started by about middle of September, 16 projects, major projects, what we consider to be major projects in the district. So, what I'll do is I'll just be taking you through majority of those projects as we go through. The one thing that I'd like to say too is, in the eight years, almost nine years that I've been at the district, this is probably the most amount of summer projects that we've done in one summer, and probably the most amount of third-party contractors that we've had in the buildings. And that's including the HVAC modernization last summer. So, it was a very busy summer, still a very busy summer. I hope everybody's ready for school to start in a couple of weeks. I wish we had two more weeks to finish the stuff, but hey, we're gonna, we're gonna keep moving forward. So, if you want to start, we have Dr. Fairchild has this up. I guess we'll go through it since he took the time to make it for us. The first project that we went through and we got completed this summer was the middle school bus drop-off and small parking lot out in front of the middle school. Some little notes on this, the, the parking lot itself was actually taken all the way down to the base and redone. The bus drop-off, the loop, was actually in pretty decent shape. So, we just had that milled out and that was just resurfaced. So, the base coat was good, we just had the wear coat put on. So, that project was completed, I think, end of June. Next, we have the two Kelly hot water heater replacements, domestic hot water at Kelly. One was in the boiler room, which serves all of the building's hot water. And the other one was in the mezzanine above the gym. And that hot water heater serves the kitchen area. So, we had both of those upgraded and updated. As you can see on the right picture, the pad that was laid down, that was actually the size of the old domestic hot water heater. The new one is a high-efficiency on-demand hot water heater, so it actually has a smaller footprint. And should save us a little bit of money since it's high efficiency. The next, we, the next project that we completed also at Kelly was the upgrade of the fire alarm panel at the Kelly School. This was the last of the upgrades that needed to be done for all the fire panels. So, all of our fire panels now have been upgraded and can be put on a monitoring service if we, if we so choose. So, it was the last, most outdated fire panel that we had. We finally got that one upgraded, so all of them are really current. The next is, we had four areas at Kelly Elementary again, where the, the, the concrete was kind of coming apart and it was raising and was causing some trip hazards for the staff and students there. So, we had low bar associates come in and they repaired four areas that were the worst. I don't know if you guys remember, outside the gym, we had the gray rubber tile put, that was the, the, probably the most major one that we had repaired of all four. But we had all of them addressed and repaired, and we got everything re-tiled. And once Jim goes in, he'll wax everything up and make everything look good again. So, we got that completed as well. One issue outside, which also was becoming a trip hazard and, and a hazard for people walking in, was the sidewalk. And that, the sidewalk is outside of the parent drop-off in between, where the parents drop off in the main parking lot. We actually had it repaved, patched in that one section. And they, they came in and they actually tore out all of the, about 25-foot of concrete. And they relayed concrete in there to make everything smooth. And even again, so we eliminated that tripping hazard for everybody that's coming in the building. In all three buildings this summer. And then, oh, so the, the next thing that started, which I wasn't, I didn't have a complete hand in. This was actually mostly Mrs. Moses working and Dr. Fairchild. But we have the Kelly Playground and Mr. Wetzel too. The Kelly Playground, which is being updated and upgraded. So, they're not done, but they are moving quite along. We have the swing set that's being installed on the left-hand side there. And then, the rest of the, of the playground is going in on the right. I'm standing on the roof taking this picture. So, what you can't see that was actually not taken out was the playground area closest to the building that was actually left in. It was still in really good condition, so we're just taking that out. And we're adding the corkine flooring for that. But that, that part of the playground is actually still in, wasn't taken out. But the rest of that is all being, was all taken out, it's being put back in. So, I mean, they're moving right along on that, they're actually making some pretty good time. So, we're hoping to have that, that done pretty quick. The next thing that happened in all three of the buildings this summer also was our restroom partitions. All of the restroom partitions in all the buildings were steel partitions. And they were rusting through and they were getting pretty old and beat up. So, what we did was we went through and replaced all the partitions and all the gang restrooms in all the buildings, apart from the high school. So, we've got nice new green partitions in all of the restrooms, which actually look really good. If you get a chance to actually walk in any of the restrooms in person, you'll see they, they look really nice. Another thing that we did out at Lindtown is the path that goes from the back of the Lindtown Playground out to, what's the road out there?
19th Street.
I think it's 19th Street, yes. That, that path is used every day by walkers, by students coming in and out. And then, in the summer, it's used by students to access the playground and parents as well. It was pretty dilapidated and torn up, so we actually went through and had them repay, Gattarius came in and they repaved the whole thing. And we actually widened it a little bit as well, to make it a little bit wider for everybody. So, it's actually looks, it looks good. So, we had that completed as well this summer. One of the major projects that we had at Lindtown was the EPDM roof restoration on the roof. So, all of the old black EPDM was also, was, was all restored and taken care of. We now have a nice new white roof on Lindtown that has a 25-year warranty to go along with the 20-year warranty from the green metal pitch section that we did a couple of years ago. So, that is completed and it looks really nice. And with all of the major rainstorms that we've had over the last two weeks, we have not had any leaks. So, it is doing very well. So, I'm, I'm glad that that worked out. And then, the major project over two of the buildings, Kelly Elementary and Lindtown Elementary, was the painting project that you guys approved. The painters worked tirelessly, the custodians worked tirelessly to get everything ready for the painters to come in. There was a big cooperative effort on everybody's part, including the principals and staff members, to get this done. It was amazing to see it happen. And this is some of the pictures that we took out at Kelly. You can see the halls went from blue and red and white to Lewisburg green and yellow, which is great. I think it looks wonderful. And when we guys walk through, I think it even looks better. The pictures really don't do the building justice. So, we took a couple of pictures of the classrooms. We've got the library going in there. I think there's a second slide, right John? The gym looks amazing, we got rid of the blue and red again. So, the green and yellow really stands out, especially in the gym. I think the brick hall in the original section of the building, my personal favorite, I think that looks the best just because of the brick, I think it looks really good painted. And then, in all the classrooms, the stripes for each color on the top of the wall was eliminated with the nice, the nice white paint, so the classrooms look really good. And then, Lindtown. So, Lindtown, we also did the same thing, again, all the hallways, all the, everything from ceiling to floor was painted. At Lindtown, just like at Kelly, actually, I don't think, I don't think we saw any pictures of doors, but all the Kelly's, all the doors at Lindtown that did have paint on them were repainted. So, anything that had paint was painted, including door frames. In some of these classrooms, we have wood molding, not, not rubber molding, that was all painted. A lot of the window frames surrounding the library and some of the other places that have window frames that were painted were also painted. So, everything that need, that could get painted was painted, was really good. The gym area was painted, the partition wall, we actually got painted as well. This is the IU room situated next to the library, that is all painted. One of the other things that we did as well was that we were able to get the mat room done at the middle school. That was something that Kathy wanted to make sure that we got done this summer. The mat room was done, actually, floor to ceiling. The whole thing was done just because of the amount of just how dilapidated and run-down it was. We also, I believe if you guys remember, we also remediated. There was a little bit of a mold issue that we came in and we had them remediate. So, we got rid of all the mold before, make sure everything was, was mold-free. And then, we came back in and we had them paint. So, the floor, the, the access from the middle school was painted, walls, ceilings, and the floor was painted all the way to the very end of the mat room. And then, all of the walls up to where the wrestling mats are going to go. And the entire ceiling was also painted. We also got rid of the old closet area that had a bunch of old dilapidated equipment in there. We got rid of all of that. And then, we just put up the wall where the sump pump is for, for drainage and everything. Actually, looks really nice there. So, we actually had that all painted this, this summer as well. So, the other projects that we have ongoing or that have not started yet for one reason or another or are started is the middle school exterior door replacement. That is the door from the cafeteria out to where the trash cans are by Washington Avenue. They have started that, they had to come in, they put, they had to tear up the concrete, laid the concrete in, and they're waiting for the concrete to cure. Once that's all finished, they'll be in and they will finish getting that door completed. The FOB access project for Kelly has started. We were waiting on some of the hardware to start getting the doors converted. But, you know, in talking with the contractors, they're either going to work on the evenings and weekends to get the hardware switched over so that we have FOB access. And as that gets done, they're going to be putting everything on the faculty access right at first. So, you know, teachers will be able to access their rooms as they're getting into the building. That way, if they come in one day and there's a FOB on their door, they'll still be able to access their rooms. We're not going to lock anybody out of the building. Softball field renovation, the last little bit of that that you guys approved will be started. That is getting, extending the infield another five feet. And then, getting some of the areas by the first and third baselines re-sotted. So, that's all going to happen after the end of the junior high softball season, once they're done playing. The wheelchair lift at the middle school, that is on order. It's five to six weeks out. It's looking like we'll be able to get that install done about mid-September. In speaking with, I can't remember your name, the fall play happens in November. So, we will be good to make sure that if anybody needs to utilize that to access the stage for the fall play, it will be ready and, and good to go before the fall play starts. So, that's hopeful. And the baseball field renovation, the only thing we're waiting on that for the, the baseball field to start the renovation in between the middle school and Lindtown above the parking lot, we're just waiting on the last of the permits from the Conservation District to be approved. Once we get those permits, you know, we'll be, we'll be hitting that as hard as we can, as fast as we can, getting the contractors in to get that all done, get that prepared, overseeded, and get ready for play, so. The other thing that we do have going on, which wasn't a, a project for us in terms of the summer, is also the greenhouse. The construction of the greenhouse did start a few weeks ago, and I think they're almost complete. There's a few more things that they've got to get done with that, but it's, it's coming along really nicely. Everything's been going up pretty quick. There hasn't really been a whole lot of issues or problems that have come up out of that. So, the greenhouse is actually coming along really, really nicely as well, so. That is, I think, all we have here, John? So. Phew, a lot of stuff, questions, comments, concerns about any of it, all of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to express immense gratitude to Delbert and everyone involved. It started with board support to allow us to work with all of this. And then, everybody with their good work ethic, a great summer work crew, with our students who came in as part of our summer employ, and our custodians, and the flexibility to make a plan and then change a plan is needed and necessary, and clean out around the painters and the pavers and everything else going on. But we're really excited that the facilities are, are going to be ready to welcome everyone back. Delbert, again, thank you very, very much for all that you did here with your leadership.
And then, actually, one thing I did want to, I did want to add to that I forgot, I was, I was thinking about as well. You can't really tell again in the pictures, but one of the things that Kathy wanted us to do to ensure just based off of what happened with the HVAC modernization last year at the middle school, is we've gone through and every learning space at Lindtown and at Kelly, as well as the middle school, now has LED lighting. So, we went through, our custodians, actually not me, our custodians went through. And as they were cleaning rooms, they went through and updated all of the, all of the lights to LED lighting. So, all of our learning spaces right now have LED lights, which is a night and day difference compared to what the rooms looked like last year. I mean, when, when they switched out one room and you could walk in between a room that did and didn't have LED lighting, there is really an immense difference in between the painting on the walls and then having the rooms cleaned with the newly waxed floors. I mean, the rooms really look phenomenal. If you guys, like I said, have a chance to walk through any of the buildings before school starts to just kind of look at the transition, it really was amazing. So, I just also wanted to, to point that out as well, that we did the LED upgrades too. So, now, we're just working on the hallways. We'll get the hallways upgraded and then we'll be able to go, so.
Thank you again, Delbert.
Thank you.
Thanks, Delbert. We will move to old business for board action. And the first item would be the handbook, student, parent-student handbook.
And we have them ready to go, you have the links there, ready for approval. This was my first chance to work with principals, to prepare them in the electronic format that Dr. Ball had helped us move to previously. And they are ready to go, to be utilized by our students and their families. We ask that you approve them this evening.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Did you get that, Paula? Any discussion? All right.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Unsicker-Facero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
All right, with that, we'll move to the curriculum. Anything you want to mention on that?
You've had these course overviews from previous board meetings. I ask that you approve them this evening. Per our policy, this body of work shows our professional staff members diligence to planning. Our students will best benefit from the new courses and the revised courses that are entailed here. So, if you will, please, let's have approval for those and we can begin.
Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
And we'll call, or any discussion, I'm sorry.
Dr. Unsicker-Facero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
And we'll move right to new business action items. Start with the interpreter agreement.
All right, you have the four-year work agreement for our interpreter specialist, Niree Hack. And I ask that you approve that this evening.
Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Moves it seconded, any discussion?
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Unsicker-Facero?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
And next, always a fan favorite, the change order.
Yes, so, as you are aware, the folks have been putting together our Kelly Playground and they've been doing wonderful work. And unfortunately, in the process, once again, the Newman property and the property adjacent to us, if it's not water, it's rocks. And so, as we mentioned to you previously, they've required some extra time and some extra equipment to deal with the shale that is just below the asphalt. We're also looking at an additional item that was put in. The way the swings are situated, you'll see this when you go out in person, the way they're situated and the way they're leveled out, there is a patch or an area between the swings and the playground equipment that is a little high. And based on the placement of the swings, that would not be level with the wood, the engineered wood fiber that would be going underneath the swings. Sorry, I have to use the right words. And so, part of the change order is to remove the asphalt, take it down, and fill in with both riverstone and pea gravel to provide a level transition between the swings and the playground equipment, eliminate that tripping hazard. And I believe Mr. Wetzel has some picnic tables that he can place there as well for folks to sit during recess or during general playground time. So, we would ask that you approve this change order this evening, even as the work is going on, so that things will be wrapped up here before Kelly opens.
Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Any discussion?
The only question I have about it with the river rock and the pea gravel, so that's just in that one area?
Yes, just in the one area.
They're looking at accessibility and pea gravel.
Yes, it'll be the tran-
It's the transition between the engineered wood fiber and the corkine.
So, it's kind of, you know, dividing the two, if you will.
Any other questions?
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Unsicker-Facero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Next up is the high school, middle school vape detection system.
Yes, we are, I believe the installation for that begins Monday. Yes, so the order has been placed as per our discussions previously. So, we would ask that you approve these quotes retroactively. And the installation, like we said, begins Monday. So, hopefully, it'll be up and running for the start of school.
I have a motion.
So moved, second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Unsicker-Facero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
And then, cyber insurance quotes, John.
Yes, it's that time of year where we need to renew our cyber insurance. And based on the proposals received, we would ask that you approve the proposal from Chubb for our 23-24 cyber insurance at a total cost of $11,036, which is slightly down from last year.
Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, Paul.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Unsicker-Facero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Next item on the agenda is item to exonerate school taxes for the Union County Historical Society.
Yes, so, as many of you are aware, the Union County Historical Society purchased the Packwood House, which consists of, the Packwood House Museum, which consists of three parcels. Previously, the Packwood House was exempt property. Right now, the Union County Historical Society, a nonprofit organization, is in the process of acquiring a tax exemption for this property. But in the meantime, that will only be effective for the 2024 year. So, in the meantime, they're asking us to exonerate them from their 2023 school taxes. And again, it was exempt back when it was the Packwood House Museum. So, we would just ask that the board agree to this formality, if you will, this evening.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
We didn't do this for EVAN during the time that they demolished the building, correct? They paid a little bit of property taxes until it was reassessed?
Yes.
Yep.
Have we ever not done this? I don't remember this coming up in the past.
I'm not aware of any tax-exempt property that has changed hands like this, so.
Are we setting a bad precedent by doing it? I mean, if there's any questions in the future, since we didn't do it for EVAN?
Well, I mean, with EVAN, it, it wasn't put to a tax-exempt use. It was simply held as a piece of property. Previously, this was tax-exempt and it continues to be tax-exempt. So, this is kind of a, you know, just a transition.
Issue.
Yeah, exactly. So, I, I don't believe we would be setting any negative precedence.
How much money are we talking about, John, if, if they're for the 23-year? I'm assuming there's no reason to think it's not going to be approved.
You, you wouldn't see it from a galloping horse, let's put it that way.
Do we know when, do they, when do they expect to have the approval?
I, I believe-
So, let's introduce our, our guests.
We have some guests here from, from the Historical Society. Absolutely, certainly.
Yes, good evening. My name is Matt Wagner. I am the Secretary of the Union County Historical Society. My colleague with me is Phyllis Dyer. She is the treasurer of the society. We actually purchased the property on May 3rd of this year. So, we do own the property. The transaction or the, the fact that the property came up for sale surprised many in the community and it surprised us. And fortunately, we were able to, to pull our finances together and we were able to make the purchase. So, we are continuing the, what the facility was a museum, a nonprofit museum. And we are going to continue that as a, as what's going on in the facility, as a nonprofit museum, as well as we are partnering with the Lewisburg Area Council of the Arts, or the Lewisburg Arts Council. And they will have a space in there as well. It'll be their home for their, for their art galleries and for exhibitions. So, it's a shared space, which also, the, the whole thing kind of pulls together what Edith Featherston's mission was, to have a facility, a museum that promoted decorative arts as well as fine arts and paintings. And we will, could be able to continue just a little bit of that. Although, we, we will be adding the component of, of a history museum to, to that complex. So, we already own the property. But because it happened in the manner in which it did, we didn't have the opportunity to apply for the, the usual procedure to ask for an exemption or have the exemption transferred over. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Just out of curiosity, what does that timeframe generally look like? I mean, is the approval process pretty quickly, that the approval be granted quickly? Or is it very drawn out?
You mean, you mean the approval for next year's taxes?
Correct, yeah.
We've already begun the application procedure and- Yeah, it should probably take place in September, the attorney told us. Which is plenty in time, because the deadline is actually in December for, for 2024. We're just asking to be forgiven for this year.
And that's all we're voting on, is to forgive this year. So, if something were to happen, like, it would need to come back up next year, we wouldn't be forgiving forever.
This is just for 2023, correct, yep.
Any other questions? Lauren, Paula?
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Unsicker-Facero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
The Historical Society, thank you very much.
Next up, we have an update to the support staff handbook.
And that one's mine. This is a story with closure. And we're bringing to you, as we bring our maintenance, custodians, and food service workers into the already existing support staff handbook. And we ask that you simply acknowledge that here at this time.
Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Paula?
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Unsicker-Facero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
And along with that comes some additional starting wages.
Yes, also in the discussions with the, with this group of the support staff. Also in the discussions with the, with this group of the support staff, as you know, earlier, we had a major shift for the starting wage matrix for secretaries and aides and our substitutes. And now we would ask that you complete that picture with the custodians, food service and maintenance this evening. And all of this was accounted for in our budget. So the budget remains the same, but we would ask that you approve these starting wages retroactive to July 1st.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Paul.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And last up is the bus camera system.
Okay. So as some of you may remember, if you were here, our previous camera system that was on our Aurora buses was purchased in 2016, which is seven years ago. And as you know, technology tends to run out of time pretty quickly. So when we had the cameras taken out of our Aurora buses at the end of the contract, we determined that it wasn't really feasible to continue using them. So we've gone out and we've gotten quotes for replacement systems. You see the quotes here before you this evening. We would ask that you approve the quote from Skywatch for the bus camera systems at a cost of $26,416. And the reason we are not going with the slightly lower priced Provision is because with the Provision system, they are locked into four cameras per bus. There is no expansion capability, whereas Skywatch, we will have three cameras, 360-degree cameras in the ceiling of the bus, but there is, it's expandable up to eight cameras. And they also have the best online viewing and recording system that would be compatible with both Windows and Mac PCs. And that was part of the problem we had with our previous system, was getting the video to, to our principals, who are all using Macs, as you can see behind me. So this new system is web-based, so the principals will be able to access it directly from their computers. So again, we would ask that you approve the quote from Skywatch. And with your approval, we'll work with them to get those ordered, get them in and installed in our buses as soon as possible.
Thank you, John. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Does this record sound also?
Yes.
Anyone else? Paula?
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good. Moving on to board information. In the new business, we have the band making the trip.
We do. We received a proposal from the high school band to take part in what is to be the first Veterans Day parade in Washington DC. Very excited to make that trip. Policy 121 reminds us of a three-month window to give you notice that they intend to pull together some fundraising to offset costs. And they look forward to the opportunity to go over the Veterans Day weekend and perform in Washington DC.
Next up is the positive pay protection.
Okay. We have a proposal in front of you from our bank, Susquehanna Community Bank, for what is known as positive pay. And this is an added layer of security that we would implement on our general fund bank account. And what this does is after each check run, we would upload a list of checks into the bank software such that in the event someone were to get a hold of one of our checks and try to forge a check and try to cash it for the wrong payee or a different amount, which by the way, we're seeing a lot more of these days. Basically, people are stealing checks from the mail and whiting out names and attempting to pass them off. So what this will do is add an added layer of protection to our bank account. And if things don't match up, it won't allow the check to go through, it'll deny the payment. And so again, there is a small cost of $60 per month for, per the account. But again, I think it is definitely a worthwhile investment for us to protect our largest bank account that we have and keep our school district funds safe. So we'll be bringing that back to you at the next meeting for your consideration.
Very good. Next up is the board's president report, which I could tell you I don't have tonight because of the last-minute nature of running the meeting. The truth is, I wouldn't have one even if it hadn't been last minute. We will just move on to the superintendent report.
Thank you. I am going to share a few comments and I want to start by introducing who's in the room with us tonight. For the general awareness, this is the first opportunity for our assistant superintendent, Mr. Hoover, to sit in the board at the table and, and take part. We have our new administrators joining our principals' table, so Mr. Brett Hoffmaster sitting there with Mr. Wetzel, Mr. Michael Sikolzik sitting next to Josh, of course, and Paula. And we're glad to have our administrative team intact here as we get ready to open. I will also point out, one of the teachers whose name appears on our personnel report for hire, say hello, Mrs. McSweene. Carolyn McSweene is coming in to work in high school English this year, and we're glad to have you with us. Thank you. It is the final preparations for the start. We're getting close. We're making those final to-do lists at every level as we get ready to begin our academic year. We have so many of our facilities projects completed or nearly finished. And again, we've had the chance to look at some great pictures and hear Delbert tonight share the work that's been ongoing with you. To date, we have 118 in kindergarten. We've been looking at that enrollment and that's certainly shaping up to be close to what is a typical class size for us. We have 17 seniors taking full advantage of what is now called early college, what had been the ACE program with what had been Bloomsburg, that's now Commonwealth University. But they begin very quickly here. And, and so we, you know, are prepared to support them. 25 students have chosen to study at SUN, and that's a very representational number for our district over the last several years. John and I just did a three-year history looking at SUN enrollment. So again, they're getting ready to start as well here at SUN. And 60 new students who have enrolled across the K-12. So we'll be welcoming new students and families into the district as well. I believe at this moment, knock on wood, with our assistant superintendent in place, our principals in place, our new teachers hired, almost all of the support staff positions filled, bus drivers in place, cafeteria workers, custodians and maintenance, staff wages determined, it's starting to feel pretty much like it's time to open the doors and welcome everyone into the new school year. Next week, 10 of our new staff will attend the APL professional development at the IU. We always believe this is good foundational professional development for new teachers coming into the district, and we're glad they can take part in that. Our own new teacher orientation will follow the two days of APL. Our orientation will be next Thursday, the 17th of August. And then our convocation agenda just went out to staff in preparation for our Monday morning, August 21st gathering in the high school auditorium. We've mentioned and shared, but please put that date on your calendars and join us if you can. It's morning refreshments at 7:30. The program begins at 8:00. And if you can join us, again, it's always a wonderful opportunity when we bring 240 members of the learning organization to the same place and time, and we welcome everybody in. We have lots of good things to celebrate and lots of wonderful staff to recognize for years of service and attaining tenure. It's always a great opportunity to bring everyone together. I think I hit all the highlights, okay? Thank you.
Any board liaison or committee reports that you, anybody like to comment on? I'll just say that the labor committee actually met. It's a little redundant because you already took action and passed everything that we talked about, but we didn't, we didn't meet with the new labor group members. We'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any board member would like held out separate, voted upon separately?
The personnel report. I just said, okay, never mind.
You can do this. Is somebody like to make a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion about any items that we need to talk about? Paula?
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes, except for the personnel report because I'm listed as a volunteer.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
And Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. With that, we will move to citizens' comments, the board on a non-agenda item, if there are any.
We do not have any comments online.
There do not appear to be any in the room. Directors' comments. Jamie, would you like to start us off tonight?
Sure. The only thing is just to acknowledge the band going to DC. I think that's awesome. I think those are trips that people remember for their lives when they do something cool like that. So I think that's really great that our band has the opportunity to do that. And if something that's a first is even more exciting.
I'd just say, welcome to all the new faces that are officially joining and that we just voted on tonight as well. So welcome to the district.
I had a chance with the labor committee to actually go into Lindtown earlier this week, and Mr. Vegas is not exaggerating, it looks amazing. It's just a bright, fresh place for students, family, faculty. So pleased about that. I'm very pleased with the Spanish departments, the secondary level that I took note of, the curriculum for the year. It's very, having taught Spanish briefly, what I appreciate is the real-life exercises and situations that the teachers are bringing to the study of language. It's not just grammar and looking at a text, it's studying the lives of people, news in the language. So I'm really excited to have appreciated that.
Welcome to, to the new folks. It's nice to have you with us officially. And I'm actually going to read a statement, I have. So it is "With regret that I announce this evening that I must resign my position as school director effective August 15th of this year. Because I will be working and living in London throughout the fall semester, I will not be able to attend meetings in person or participate virtually, nor will I be able to keep abreast appropriately of the business of the board and the district. Therefore, I will be stepping down a few months prior to the end of my term. In thinking about what I wanted to say tonight, I'm going full English teacher on you, I apologize. I turned to words from George Eliot's novel, Middlemarch, which if you emailed me at my non-school board email, you might have seen in my signature line. So these are words that guide me as I try to live in ways that benefit others. Eliot writes, "The growing good of the world is partly dependent on unhistoric acts, and that things are not so ill with you and me as they might have been, is half owing to the number who lived faithfully a hidden life. Together we on the board work faithfully for the good of the Lewisburg community, and often what we do here seems unhistoric or goes unnoticed. But our work matters and it makes a difference. I believe we have collectively made things not so ill for the members of our community, and I have been very proud to participate in that work. Extens sincere thanks to my colleagues on the board and to all of the district administrators here tonight and those who are not here, who I've worked with over the years. It has truly been a privilege to work alongside all of you." Thank you for the flowers, which I think I probably owe my thanks to you, Paula. And to the members of the community who are paying attention, please know that this is a really good board. We work together really well, and this board will continue to make things better for all of us here in Lewisburg. Thank you.
On that note, good luck. Thank you. Thank you for your service. I know you've put a lot of time, effort, blood, sweat and tears into when you were president, as well as just serving on the board. So I appreciate getting to know you and good luck. Welcome to all the new faces. I'm excited. As I see patients and I've seen kids and they're all like already talking about new things happening at the school, so it's out there, which is awesome. And it's, it's good to hear good things before school starts instead of dread or something along those lines. I just want to note, you know, we talk about money a lot here and how much money we spend or don't spend. We're spending almost $100,000 on kind of protection for our kids, but also things that if our kids could understand that if they just did things maybe the right way, some of that money could be filtered back a different way. Cameras on a bus, I grew up riding the bus every day to and from school until I was in 10th grade, there was not a single camera on those buses. I'm not saying it's right or wrong for cameras on the bus. I think they need to be there for protection for our drivers as well as students and families and hopefully can keep things where kids are safer and staff and bus drivers are safer. And the vape protection, I think that's been needed for a long time because kids don't get it. They don't understand the dangers that they're doing to their bodies. They don't understand the dangers that they're doing to their friends. And I think there's a lot of parents that don't understand the dangers and promote it rather than condone it. So you're, condone it instead of eliminate it or stop it. So I just want to take note to that. That's a lot of money. It really is. Our budget is big, but not that big. And, you know, I'd much rather see $100,000 going into something really awesome for our kids rather than those two things, but I know they're needed, so that's why I voted for them.
Okay. And just so you know, if there'd been cameras on the buses when I was riding them, they would have been like Polaroids or something. Kristen?
Yeah. I too wanted to welcome all the new faces, not so new faces, but in new roles. Welcome. We're all really excited that you all are here. I wanted to take a minute tonight to, if anyone is on Instagram, check out Archie the library dog. So Mrs. Hornberger, the Kelly Elementary librarian, has a dog that comes in to the library from time to time. I don't know how frequently Mr. Wetzel, but from time to time, they all, whenever, yeah. They all know, they all know Archie. And if you've had a student at Kelly anytime recently, you know that she puts together a great reading program over the summer. And this year, she knocked it out of the park even more than she usually does. All the kids came home with Flat Archie's, like spinoffs of old Flat Stanley. And Flat Archie has gone on a lot of summer vacations. And it's really been nice to see my child, who's at Kelly, and her friends who are at Kelly, talk about Archie and how much of the reading incentive they've completed and different things like that. So just a special kind of shout out to her. I also, and Kathy mentioned this last time, but one of the really great things that has happened with the Kelly new playground is we've had a lot of support from like different groups in the community. And one of those groups has been the Remy Palette Company. It's owned by a local family. And last week, with the addition we voted on, there was some more wood that was needed. And without a, like even thinking twice, they came through really quickly with, they provided the wood originally, and we've added more to it. So I just wanted to give another thank you to them because it's, you know, it is a community effort and having people and businesses in the community who are willing to step in when we need a little bit of extra help is really wonderful. I think that's all.
Before I close this out, Vince, did you have anything you want to add?
No, it's great to be here. I'm honored to be part of the Lewisburg family, and it's been great getting to.
and, uh, it's been great, uh, getting tours from these folks over here of their buildings. Uh, great admin staff. I appreciate your, uh, your confidence in me as an administrator, assistant superintendent. Good talking to Kathy, you got a lot today, um, but glad to be here.
Okay. So, um, Virginia, thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it, and you'll be sorely missed. Um, for the rest of the board, those of you who may not been through the process before, come on, come, the official date of Virginia's resignation begins a process that we have to go through. It's all laid out in policy, so you will be getting more information, uh, in the coming days about how we will execute that process. Um, and I noted to myself that I failed to formally excuse Erin and Mary Ann from tonight's meeting, that they are away and out of town, so don't think that they're in trouble or have to serve detention or anything like that. And I don't have anything additional tonight, so if there are nothing else for anyone to add, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Very good. And with the voice vote, anybody, is there?
Aye.
Ayes. Are there any non-ayes? Very good. Any adjourn?